This conference will now be recorded.
Hi Brendan, can you hear us and see us okay?
Yeah, I sure can.
Richard's not gonna be here today, he's sick and everybody else is in the room, you probably see that, so we're just waiting for it. I'm gonna just mute it for now. I didn't hear it, say it now. Are you late Brendan?
Yeah, just going through the stuff that we have on the drive here.
There's some stuff that I added this morning and Amber added some additional information just a few minutes ago as well.
They don't have a Facebook page. Like a tent year sort of.
Hi Neil, is that Neil, is that you, can you hear us alright, see us? Is that Mike, is M, is Mike M?
Kind of a tent year thing.
Maybe not. Neil, do you know if Mike was gonna be here in person or is he gonna be online?
I don't know for sure.
Okay.
He said online yesterday.
Okay, we'll just wait a little bit, we got a few minutes. I'm gonna.
I emailed this morning, said that Anthony.
Mike, can you hear us okay?
I can.
We're just gonna wait a little bit, Commissioner Sleep isn't able to join us today, so we've got three commissioners in the room and Commissioner Flanagan is on as well. So just a few minutes and we'll get started.
No problem, good morning everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
Hey, so Bruce, I've never used this app, to mute, do you just turn the microphone off, what do you?
Yeah, I think that's it, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Should look that way, yeah.
And.
Ron Har, did you need a hug too?
No.
So just to be clear, that's outside of your job.
That is outside, yeah. So that's his friend Brendan. She needed one.
I gave it to them, they all hung up.
Okay, it's eleven o'clock too. Alright, you please join me in the flag of slay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, welcome everyone. Now the meeting to order, and the first is to appropriate agenda concerning changes before. No changes, Mr. Chairman, I would let anybody in the audience know who doesn't know that Commissioner Sleep is not here, but more other commissioners are represented.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, and Moskowitz second to approve the agenda, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, do we have any conflicts? Nope, okay. Well, we are down to our eleven fifteen already, are all the players here?
I think so.
So Mike's online.
Okay.
I can give a bit of an update?
Yeah, if you please. I think from the last meeting, one of the main issues was Brendan was gonna explore whether being the lead applicant would adversely affect the county's bond rating or ability to bond or in any way adversely affect the current Public Safety Services Center project. I would defer to her, but I think the answer is in the negative in all those respects, so there is no problem from that standpoint. And I can say that a number of people put in quite a bit of time since she last met, we appreciate Anthony's time, Jennifer Seitzman, the Blacklist Council Local Governments, Brendan and Amber and I, like Emma's been involved as well, done quite a bit of talking. And so I think I will defer to Anthony at this point and maybe add some other information in there, but we have some updates, there are some other issues that have come up throughout those discussions and we'll talk about those.
So we kind of have an outline of how we wanna cover the ground. I've created, I tried to make it as comprehensive as possible of all the questions that were raised and how the answers were researched and provided, and that's that document there. But before we get into that, I'd like to open sort of the mic short, because one of the major things that was discussed was the assets that are currently there now, in the current situation and agreements that they have between the sanitary district, which would be a public entity, and the developer, which is each going, when it comes to the assets is H2O Clear Solutions is Mike Short's company that deals exclusively with the assets. I think his development company is a different name and deals in that realm. So Mike, maybe, Mike, if you wanna go ahead and, you have the floor.
Sure, first of all, I wanna thank everyone for the time today, I know that calling a special session, it puts a lot of pressure on everybody and making it important, so thank you for your time today. Yeah, I mean, I prepared a few words, just kind of in summary, you know, many of the folks, Amber and Bruce in particular, you know, I've been working with, you know, since 2013. And as Anthony just said, so Clear Solutions is a separate entity altogether, Four Bears is the developer, it has partners involved in it, H2O Clear Solutions is owned by my wife and I. And it was always set up to be transitioned at some point, so those of you that may not have the history, in 2013, when my wife and I bought the property, you know, basically there was a building moratorium, the county had changed its position on requiring a wastewater treatment plant. And so, you know, we kind of accomplished the impossible, and a lot of folks, you know, didn't think that we could do what we did. But I've always, it's always been my vision to get the district more involved and to have them to own the assets. And so, you know, and it was also part of the original plan was always to have the opportunity to expand the wastewater treatment plant to the neighboring communities and serve them. So anyway, I thought that was just an interesting footnote for those that may not have the history there. Second of all, I think that, I just wanted to convey my confidence, I mean, I've worked with many, many engineers in the eleven years of owning Apple Springs or being involved in it, and Anthony's really been a breath of fresh air, we've had some challenging engineers, but I just, you know, I really think we got a solid plan, he has helped at the tail end, I mean KLJ was involved in the second wastewater treatment plant that was installed recently, and it's really doing well. And Anthony has just brought tremendous experience and knowledge that I think positions us really well. So that was it. The other thing, you know, looking through the notes, I just wanted to give you guys an opportunity to ask me any questions, but there is an LOU draft that's been put together with the district already, that's been floated out there. Go ahead. The challenge, the challenge has always been funding, you know, they, a couple of different times have requested state funding and they either didn't meet the parameters or different things, but, so that's, I wouldn't say it's signed, but the draft is there and it's been floated out, actually multiple versions over the years, but the current one is there. And I wanted you to hear from me directly, so the plan is this, we're, I understand everyone's risk, and I think Bruce and Amber will back me on this, I mean, I've tried to always do what I've said I was gonna do from 2013. And with that, if we are fortunate enough to have Lawrence County be the applicant and we are awarded it, I'm not going anywhere, I mean, the plan is for things to, you know, we've accomplished a lot in eleven years, so even with the sale of the wastewater to the district, I view for some period of time, H2O Clear Solutions will in essence continue to be the operator, I'll manage all the pieces, which includes the sampling, which includes all the reports to DNR, and working with KLJ and Anthony. So I just think that this opportunity is somewhat of a once in a lifetime for all of us, not only for the community, but in terms of, you know, just being something that we can all be proud of for the next generations. And so, I look for the contracts with the district to be irrevocable with some parameters on it, but again, working with Anthony to remove as much risk as possible for Lawrence County as well as the workload, I know that there still is workload there, but we, Anthony's got a rock solid plan in place to have funding to basically minimize that and leverage it for the important things. So anyway, I don't know, Anthony, did you, is my outline kind of been submitted, do the folks have that?
Yes, yep.
So I don't, I don't need to go through bullet by bullet, you know, I put some summary in there, I guess in conclusion, the two things that I'd like to also add is, the end game is a joint partnership, you know, public and private, and I think KLJ has us on that track. And as I indicated, I think this is just a rare opportunity for all of us. And I would just ask the commissioners, if for some reason you are not able to fully commit, just let us know sooner than later, because we would really like to be able to work on this with other folks that may be interested and so we can meet the aggressive timeframe. So anyway, that, hopefully that helps hearing from me directly, but is there any questions on any of that?
Any questions for?
Don't see any right now, Brendan, did you have any?
Okay. Anthony, did I cover the points that you wanted me to, anything that I missed?
Oh, that's great, Mike, and I think that was important for them to hear from you, that the intentions between you and the sanitary district and how it's a, there's a public-private partnership in development, and that that's kind of the foundational groundwork that existing assets towards the assets that will be put in in this proposed grant. I think we'll cover the, I'll try to go as quickly as possible through these questions, just so that if people wanna ask questions after that are not here, that I can write them down, so. Oh. Highlighted one? I was gonna have them up on screen, we need to bring them up there, so. So the first one was about how Lawrence County has historically operated regarding developers, TIPS and things like that. And that question was kind of raised, and is this a TIP, and that kind of thing. So this is, like Mike alluded to, the sanitary district has been trying in many ways to buy the assets or set up a scenario where they acquire the assets to go along with their current role as the public side of the entity. So they do have the right to, you know, through the county, they were able to get established and do millages and things through the property owners. So that LOU or letter of understanding between the two parties is already drafted, and this would be an EPA zero match grant, so there's no funds from the county required. And the financing of the project, even though it's a reimbursement, this particular program allows the recipient to receive a lump sum payment as working capital in advance. So we would obviously want to take advantage of that clause, so that there's absolutely no funds coming from the county's coffers, even upfront.
So in other words, yeah, they kind of wouldn't have to front any of the costs waiting to be reimbursed later on, that was one of the issues you looked into.
Correct, correct, and that's very common in grants, and a lot of grants have matches, but this doesn't have either of those requirements, so.
Actually, Anthony, let me chime in real quick, the other thing, and I know there's a process that we have to go through in terms of RFP and different things, and so we need to honor that. I think the other thing is, we have a good track record, I mean, we have vendors in place, DRM, DMR, and KLJ, I mean, we've been doing this. We added sewer lines for the Phase Two and for the clubhouse that we hope to be building in 2024. So anyway, the structure's there, is all I wanted to add.
Yeah, and obviously if there is any gap or item that is becoming in the category of grant ineligible, you know, that stuff does arise, that's an agreement that the county can have with the sanitary district and H2O Clear Solutions, that they will take responsibility for those costs, right Mike?
Yeah, that's correct, that's part of what's in the LOU.
Okay, great, so then the next question was regarding if this project goes through, and we asked the infrastructure gets built, would Apple Springs Sanitary District come back and say, well, we can't, we failed, we're not able to do this, we need the county to step in. And so the safeguards against that is the basis of the public-private partnership. So even when I was discussing this, my previous position, P3s were kind of a new thing for people to understand how that works. So I just wanted to clearly how the P3s leverage their strengths. So the private capital side is, we're able to leverage investment, investment that's already there, future investment, large capital improvements, and then expertise such as engineering and operations and maintenance. And so that's where the private sector has a strength. The public side of the partnership, which is partnership between the sanitary district and H2O Clear Solutions, is engaged with the actual end users, the residents, collecting user fees, millages, and maintaining the permit. So the permit is kind of the go-to for the matrix of responsibilities, so the private entity has to make sure to meet the requirements of the permit as a part of their contract. So that's, the terms of the contracts are always tied to the permit, the permit duration, just four years, four plus one year, when they do a renewal. And so everything, when they do their agreements, we factor that, you know, they're there, they're on board with these responsibilities for that duration of time with an option to renew. So every, every four years, they'll do a permit, they'll renew the permit, and they'll always have that previous operator. Usually there isn't a lot of changes when that happens, because of the nature of the agreements that they make and also the the knowledge and know-how, right, so the next person comes in would have to learn everything from scratch and would have a little bit of a disadvantage in bidding that private operations. So the next thing is the, and I don't know if that's satisfactory, if there's still lingering thoughts on that, if the county would have a risk of having to step in, I mean, they haven't had to step in yet there, so, you know, and they've had their ups and downs.
Well, I would, Anthony, I'd like to add a comment, it won't fail, because again, as he outlined with the matrix of responsibilities, H2O Clear Solutions will and has to stay involved, and so therefore, regardless, I can't see in any circumstances that it would ever default back to the county, because we've been executing today, the same group is planning to execute going forward, and you still have, you know, this matrix of water and sewer, and again, as Anthony said, I don't know if we've clearly articulated, but I don't see in any way possible that that occurs, that everybody has skin in the game, everybody has their interests aligned with success.
So the next thing is, is the project benefiting a small number of people outside Apple Springs? And if there is little or no voluntary buy-in, you know, how does that play out? So that's where I wanted to talk about the grant goals, so the grant is from the EPA, and EPA has the whole strategic plan from now until 2026, right? And so I printed out in the back page here, this little wheel, which is their goals. They're not, I didn't create them, so the goals they have are generated from a high level of federal government. And, you know, goal one.
That's scary right there.
Right, goal one, tackling climate crisis, and goal two, a decisive action to advance environmental justice. The goals there, if you lay them out on my breakdown here, one through seven, goal three of enforcing environmental laws and ensure compliance, and goal five of ensure clean and safe water for all communities, doesn't really indicate that how many people that needs to encompass, or just how that is accomplished, right? So is that accomplished by creating a water system for everybody and then everybody shares drinking water? That's one way to do things, or is it that the risk of contamination to existing drinking water is mitigated, right? And so it really depends on in individual communities, what is the, what makes the most sense, right? And also, which one has the most, is the most leveraged, because this again is a grant, right? It's not a loan, it's not an, you know, going to investors and saying, hey, we're gonna have this much return on investment. Grants are there because it is hard to pencil the numbers, right? It is hard to make sense of. $20 million to help 20 people, right? That's not financially, you know, sound, if you will, but it but it's that's why it's a grant. That's why it's it's free money from from the government because they're trying to subsidize something that would otherwise not be able to be affordable. When you look at water and sewer infrastructure, water tends to be a moneymaker and wastewater tends to be a loser in terms of its in terms of its financial model. So when we look at the infrastructure that's currently in place in Boulder Canyon, you can see that play out as well. The cost of the well, the cost of the debt is is much, much lower by a factor of like four to the cost to put in a treat mechanical treatment plant, to get a discharge permit, to put collection means, and to operate those, right? So so what we're trying to do is to tackle as a foundational item, the one that has that is struggling the most financially, right? In terms of, I mean, historically, would struggle the most in any community, right? And so to have that as the basis of a relationship with everybody and 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 that's why it's called a community change. Because otherwise, the people there are just really individuals and there really is no venue for them to get together to do anything as a group, right? And so when they're saying empower a community to address climate or environmental or pollution issues, this is what they mean. They mean that there's some sort of, in this one, in this case, would be the sanitary district, which they would participate in as equal members in. So the Apple Springs is opening up to the rest of the canyon, their their infrastructure, their resources to share. So so that's kind of the the whole purpose of of this grant. The the Justice 40, the the community change, it's all, you know, it can it can take many forms, but in our South Dakota version, it takes a form of a group of people living in a canyon that that otherwise would have no reason to even talk to to one another other than driving past each other, right? So so this gives them chance. And then when, for example, a gentleman I spoke to in the last meeting said, and I'm really concerned about water, that says, well, he's one of the yellow dots on that map, and it's 120-foot well and in a drought, it'll go dry. And he said, I'm really concerned about that. And I said, well, you would have now the venue to go to, which would be a sanitary district meeting and say, hey, I'm concerned about water. Now, this P3 that they have formulated also runs their well, which is a municipal type well, 150 gallons per minute. And would would there might be opportunities, and I'm sure there will be in the future, for them to share and pool their resources when it comes to drinking water as well, right? When and when and if the time comes and and that makes sense. And they're planning to to drill their second well under their permit within a year. So that would give even more resources and water accessible by the city.
Anthony, I'd like to make a comment. Yeah, I I prior to this meeting, I re-looked at the notes and the maps. And in the outline that's presented, I highlighted that, you know, we we have gotten some early positive feedback, but obviously more of that would be done by KLJ prior to deploying. But I I I cannot imagine in any way, shape or form that this wouldn't add a minimum of of 200 families in that. I mean, I've I've studied the map. Apple Springs or or wastewater treatment plant here is in the perfect location because of its elevation in terms of, basically, it's downhill. So I I I just think it's going to be wildly wildly adopted. There'll be some, right? Because there there will be a fee of an ongoing fee, but I I think the conversations I've had have been very positive.
Anthony, can I ask a question?
Sure.
And I haven't asked this before. I hadn't thought of it till now. So for purposes of asking my question, I'm going to maybe split it into a couple parts. So is it the plan now that that if the grant is received, that that sanitary district, whoever, will will do a certain amount of base work? And I'm going to wonder, is that going to be sort of, as I said, improving what's there right now? Is that going to be adding additional capacity just just because? And then the second part of the question then is, is is what would be done to accommodate the new users, let's say, across the highway? And does that make sense? And 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 so how are you going to, how are you going to gauge that? Because this is probably a one-time situation. And so if you have users across the highway that are interested, would you tend to put an entire network of infrastructure in, hoping that they come in later on? Or that infrastructure only serve those that are now interested now? And then so then later on in the future, if people get added on, then the sanitary district or whoever would have to to figure out how to add those additional service lines. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So part one, which is what are new improvements that are proposed? So part of, and and really, these new improvements could stand on their own as sufficient to meet the criteria of the EPA grant. Current treatment plant is a biological contactor. In the nature of all treatment plants, you release methane. It's there. It's 28 times more potent than carbon dioxide. So the EPA wants to see that mitigated, right? They want to see that aerated so that it doesn't release. It does release odors and in big scale, it can be a big, big nuisance. So so I can see why they're saying every little bit counts, but what it is 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 that some, and and this relates to the carbon offset that is that the carbon offset, carbon negative projects that the EPA would like to see. So in certain projects, they like to see that carbon is absorbed in the treatment process because there's some people that some industries that can't get down to zero, right? And so in order for for those can those industries to continue and our economy to keep moving, they need to have other facilities and and projects where the the project is actually absorbing carbon dioxide, right? And so in a biological contactor that absorbs carbon dioxide, like algae-style system, what happens is is that the photosynthesis, they absorb carbon dioxide and it releases oxygen, which is a part of the treatment process. So off-carbon offset is one of the new improvements that happens, which which creates that additional, I guess, boost to the value of this project and its ability to compete, right, for the award.
Hey, Anthony, I think one of the questions Bruce is asking, though, just to clarify and tell me if I'm wrong, Bruce, is so that's the first stage. And and so that all makes sense. And I think that's what was it's really cool. And I think something we could all be proud of because it's a unique project and that. But in the case of of across the street, I mean, we we would put in that infrastructure, correct me if I'm wrong, that that let's say that only 40% of them take advantage of that opportunity today. That infrastructure is still there, right? So even the 60%, if later either county or the state or federal forces them to go, that they just are going to have to have the cost to then hook into it later, correct?
Right. And that was like the part two of the question was, how do we reach the residents across the highway? And so our our plan is to reach all residents that are under one acre. That they can be able to tie in. They could choose to do that. Obviously, you might pass properties that are above one acre and they might say, hey, we want to, we we don't have a house there yet, but we want to be tied in. We don't want to deal with a septic field. You might have others that are within the one acre and they're able to be exempt, right, and grandfathered in. So that's fine. But right now, the there's lot, there's flooded lots throughout the the canyon. And so that gives us a roadmap of where we need to go because we need to meet one of those goals, right, of of compliant, environmental compliance, right? So so we're going to put that infrastructure in, but absolutely, you know, like even in in the map I provided in the previous presentation, it showed about 70,000 linear feet pipe. And really, our project is about 50 something, 50, less than 55,000. So there is actually already built into the design, the ability to extend if people, if if those developers wanted to do that and participate, and they have to participate in the cost of that, that would be outside this this grant, right? So because when you're doing the design, you'll always provision for future growth. And so that's what we did. Because the 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 good thing is, is the location, like Mike said, of the treatment plant now is in the lowest part of the canyon. And so it eliminates a huge amount of infrastructure like pump stations and things that would be costly and be a cost to operate. So so that's, I don't know if that answers your question on how we'd reach other side of the highway? We would we would put it in if if there's clusters of less than one acre. So then has there?
Where I was going on that, to Bruce's point, is there's value in even the beginning of that infrastructure for that to be added to later when when, as you think, and as you mentioned, Anthony, where you you think some of this is going to be forced anyway, at some state at some point. So I mean, there's value even just putting, you know, getting it to their. Anyway, I think you answered. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's that's fine. And even if it, even if the state is slow to to do enforcement, which they probably would be, it doesn't mean that it doesn't increase the value of people's property, right? So that's that's a economic factor versus a regulatory one. You know, the location of of Boulder Canyon, I mean, I know that you're, as a county, responsible for 800 square miles of area, and this little three square miles is not necessarily the the most significant. But it is in a very strategic location economically. And that's why our, that they always, in this project, have a nonprofit partner, which tends to be economic development. And so, you know, the the Sturgis Bike Rally is is a big economic generator here. Creates jobs, it creates investment. And I mean, Boulder Canyon is between Deadwood, which is a huge tourist attraction. And I even, I I love it. And you have and you have Sturgis, the rally, right? And so you're you're right on that on that route where you're gonna, there's no way that you're gonna avoid the property owners wanting to take advantage of their property rights. And, you know, make make the most of their investment, right? So what we're trying to do is is to take a system that's already there, extend it to to property owners to to be able to hook in. And then when we talked in this question about the risk of wildfires, so that falls really under the management of the U.S. Forestry Service. And I put a little statistic here on how many average fires, 99 wildfires in a year in the last 30 years, and 75% of them are from lightning. So these are natural, a natural consequence of the climate and the and the the area. So, you know, the public participation in wildfire management is another venue where if the sanitary district wanted to provide us a a venue for people to know the risk, now they would have one, right? I mean, right now, where are they going to go? I don't know. I've seen a church in the in the in the canyon that they could get together and and discuss, you know what I mean? A community center, what have you. So they have the 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 facilities there at Apple Springs to to allow residents to get together while the Forestry Service wants to give a talk on how to mitigate wildfires and who wants to volunteer. They'd have that, they'd have that venue to to use. So that's another in strengthening of the community using this project. The other thing was, so is that good? I can go to the next question? So then, has there been any public survey or engagement so far on this project to get feedback? And so by the nature of it not being awarded yet, there's there was, there's no little to no direct public engagement because, you know, it's not, it's not a guarantee that we'll get it. We're trying to make the odds of the award as high as possible. But what I have done is I've consulted people that that know about the water resources in the area that have decades of experience, local people. I call out in this one Taylor Drilling, Kim Taylor, because he's been a valuable, valuable resource in terms of knowing people's problems because he he gets the call, right? When they need, when they need a drill or they need somebody that knows what he's doing, they call him. And I I do trust everything that I've heard and and learned from him since I moved here. So and so what that that he was actually instrumental in in letting me know of the sensitivity of the aquifer, right? And that that really made me start to look into it in more depth. And then when this grant came around on Thanksgiving, I was al, it was already on my mind from last summer. And so that's where I was able to look up, you know, well, completion reports, where I pulled that map up that I provided you guys. And where I saw how few or how how little water the current wells provide, you know, it was surprising to me, five, five gallons per minute, you know? I know that they probably also have a very, very expensive pump because they're 7, 800 feet, trying to get that little bit of water out from the Madison. So and that there's all these different layers of aquifer. Obviously, KLJ has been involved and has been involved with the Western Dakota Regional Water Project. So I'm not personally involved, but I've sat in conferences and heard from the USGS on the nature of our aquifer and the outcrop and how it looks like a wedding cake, etc. So so that's that just, I think, bolsters the project in that it'll help us to give residents awareness of that of that water resource, right? And I think that's something that they want us to do. They want us to let the, oh, I think a bigger thing is the residents, when we're engaging them, we need to give them facts. We need to give them information because they might come in with very little. Now, they might not even know that that warehouse-style building that they pass every day on the way to work and back on 14A is actually a treatment plant. And I I would be, I'd like to survey how many of them even know that, that that's what that's that's what's going on inside there. So which they might pleasantly surprised to know exists, right? So so we haven't done the public engagement, but we, that is a major part of what we intend to do. And, you know, it should be, there should be no reason that it's not a beneficial experience for everybody in the canyon, right? So and that's a big part of also the partnership with economic development. They have a lot of statistics, a lot of information as well this year. So next question, that move it to the next question is, okay. Is there a liability to the county to accept the applicant for the EPA grant? What is the role and responsibility of the county to be? And so I answer this question in two parts. One, Bruce alluded to first off, when we started. So your bond counsel is is Meyer Henry. And so I had just directly spoke with Todd Meyer Henry to discuss that issue about your bond. I've experienced, I've already, I kind of already knew the answer, but, you know, obviously, you want to check state laws and local local laws as well. So so he confirmed that the county's participation, especially that it's a zero match and there's no upfront costs will no, in no way affect the county's bond interest. Then he said, give him a call at any time to ask any questions. So he's very amazingly, very easy to access. So happy to see that. So then the second is the role in the county will be as a federal grant recipient. So there are annual audits in a similar fashion to what you're going to be doing with your public service bill. What we're proposing to do, and I've already contacted the people that I've dealt with in the past in the same situation, Plant Moran. They're a big CPA firm. I don't know, heard of them or not, but I told them, you know, is it, I'm working on an EPA grant. I have potential that Lawrence County would be the applicant. Would you be willing to? And I contacted the person I've worked with in Michigan, right? And I said, would you be willing to discuss with them, providing all the auditing services and all the requirements of that to CFR 200? And 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 going through that whole process with them. And she's gave me four four times Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, when she's available to discuss it with you. They're very open to that. Their focus is municipal. They have a whole division, that group that I know. They also, what's great about them is, so in the city of Baltimore, Michigan, I did this with with them and we installed a rate methodology software, which Apple Springs Sanitary District owns, actually. They're the first one that I know. I think Vermillion has it too in South Dakota. And Plant Moran auditors actually manage that software, that rate, continuous rate methodology software on behalf of the city. So so they actually, I was impressed because it was the only one I saw where they actually got a hands-on. And so rate rates studies are are obsolete like the day after you pay for them, right? So so having a software that continually tracks the the rate to make sure that the utility is solvent, which is a big part of success, right? If you go back to the other question, is that they're not losing money and go bankrupt, right? And so that that's already in place at Apple Springs. It's one of the first things that I suggested that they do. And the CPA firms also got hands-on experience with it. So.
Anthony, is it true? I think that this question came up. I think maybe Jennifer mentioned it. We appreciate her help. She wasn't online when I said that before. But I think that Pettit County was involved in a grant similar to this. And I think they found out that their staff internally was beyond them. I'll say it like that. I don't know exactly how to say it. So they have had to hire, I think, a Minneapolis county firm. Uh, accounting firm to help them sort of with their compliance issues, with their grant compliance. And they had budgeted about thirty thousand dollars. I think for that, they only spent today like fourteen thousand or something like that. But I think that's why Anthony's bringing that up. And, and I suspect, I won't speak for Brenda, but that's something that we might need to do as well. We would have help from Jennifer and others, but we probably would want that piece of the puzzle as well. Make sense?
I think the one thing, the, the other valuable thing about it is that they're a private company, very large company, and they carry li- liability insurance. Professional liability insurance, errors and omissions. If they make a mistake, it's not all falling down. Uh, you know, uh, on the county's, um, responsibility, the, the. Person they hired to do it is a reputable firm and they have a, they have a, uh, a shield, right? A liability shield that they provide to the county. Um, so the next thing is, which is good because it segues into Black Bill's and Jennifer. Um, so, uh, generally, and this is in my experience, grant administration activities are performed by the engineering firm. Um, selected to do the design bid and administer the project. And the reason is because all supporting documentation is usually already reviewed and approved by the engineering firm, right? Through EJ CDC, which is our contract book. Um, so, but, um, there is a role specifically when it comes to picking that, um, engineering firm. Because there needs to be an independent party that would be trusted by the county that could help pick that firm. Because we need to follow the brook set, right? We need to do a qualification-based selection. Can't just say, hey, go to KLJ or whoever. Has to be done in the proper fashion.
I think if I could interject, so I think we have experience with this at the airport projects. Where what we would need to do is, is if you would go for as a grant applicant, we would need to do out requests, send out requests for proposals. Uh, and then so, so basically solicit engineering firms or those qualified to help the county to be our engineer. And then so you would, uh, you would interview them, you'd have selection criteria, you select one. And then for a period of at least three years or some requisite period of time, they are your engineer. Like this project is probably short enough where I don't know if we would have to do it again. But then we would hire them, we would have an agreement with them and they would help us to go through the, the bidding process, the bid specifications. And then probably, I think as Anthony was referring to, would, would, would review and approve any payoffs that get submitted to the county to be paid. Is that fair? Um, and so that would be another layer that would be involved as well.
Yeah, yeah. And usually the way it is, is we, uh, whoever's doing grant administration reviews and recommends approval. Obviously you make the final decision. Right, right. Um, and then, um, I, I talked about. Um, accounts receivable, accounts payable with, uh, Plant Moran. Um, that is something that, um. Other grant recipients have opted to do. I think that wouldn't be out of order in this type of grant. Because if I think of the other people who are applying for this grant, the first thing was that they had to be unorganized, right? So how does an unorganized, unincorporated entity? Deal with the accounts receivable and accounts payable of twenty million dollars, right? So they would rely on, uh, a company that is, is responsible for, for handling that. Obviously the account would have to be set up. That's why I think the nonprofit's there because they need to be somebody knowledgeable and, and setting something like that up. But obviously you don't have that, that issue. But I'm just thinking in general, um, you know, how, how normal would it be for? For another EPA grant recipient, it's supposed to be over a hundred and fifty of them in this program. Uh, to have support in paying, you know, okay, this is approved, the authorized signature signs it. Now it goes to be paid, right? So then it would go to, you know, for lack of a better example, something like paychecks, right? A company that's primary's focus is serving that role. Um, so that could also help, um, with the workload and, and obviously everybody has capacity. Um, so then the last question, um, was written bylaws and ordinances. That allow for annexation and or, and or inclusion of all voluntary hookups while excluding all non-interested parties. And so I think actually Bruce, I have to thank you for saying that, that for me, referred to a South Dakota law. Thirty-one, twelve, eight, twenty-six, which is for road districts, um, which allows for, for the district to skip over people that are not interested. Uh, while still including people either as users with a flow meter that, that, uh, dicting off to be a build meter. Or just like their waters, or, um, if it's a group, then it would, it would be a group, right? So then they, they would, we would, we would lay that out based on what makes sense, right? And that's where maybe, um, the results of the survey and the involvement of the, when we get a, a list of people I'm interested, I'm not. That's when we'll decide how we do that. If it's a one-off, then we'll have to put a flow meter for that person. If it's a, if it's a group of them, we might be able to do that through a manhole or through a, a dedicated meter for that little area. So.
And so if I may, so as Anthony referenced, the road district statutes allow for road districts to provide services to folks outside of the district. And so I was looking to see if there was a similar provision in statute regarding sanitary districts. And I, I didn't see it. I did sort of a cursory review. And so I, I think if this goes forward, the intent would be for the sanitary district to annex the area that they serve. It looks to me like they would probably have to, unless I'm wrong about them being able to serve people outside of their district, right? And then so how would they do that if there are areas that were not, folks that were not interested in participating? Because I think the statute that I've just referenced talks about being adjacent, that for sanitary district, annex territory has to be area, area that's adjacent to them. So for some reason you have some folks that weren't interested, how do you jump over them and maintain the adjacency, the contiguousness of that, right? So I think what would have to happen is, is that the, the district would have to cast their net out. And I think the statutes allow them to exclude certain areas. So, and I'm not an expert on this, I'm just projecting this out to its logical conclusion where. There'd be an area that would be identified, a boundary would be drawn around it to include all those who are interested. And then necessarily you would exclude at least for present purposes those. And, and so just trying to think that out.
Yeah, that, that's true. And I'll just give you an anecdote. So like, I, I was in, we were doing a P three in Ira Township, which is in Michigan. Northeast of Detroit. And we saw, um, the service district map of the city of Detroit and Ira Township was in it. And they said, really? Well, nobody ever told me, it never said that we would be a part of Detroit's system, right? So the, the, the colored area that is considered the, the service area of the sanitary district is their internal goals, right? Their internal, um, decisions. But it doesn't mean that, um, communities that are finding themselves in that. Or, or in this case, residents that are finding themselves in that will ever have to hook up. If they've got a system inside that works just fine and meets all the, the necessary environmental criteria, then they're left out. And Ira Township has its own treatment plant. So there was no chance of them hooking up. So, um, so that's, that's the same. In a bigger scale idea. Population served or area served is, it helps them in determining, uh. Uh, capital improvements, um, potential, uh, expansion and stuff like that, so they can budget. Um, so I, I got through my questions. Um, wanted to give an opportunity for economic development to just maybe talk about. What they saw as a valuable, you know, component of this from their perspective, right? Cause they're looking at it from a different perspective than me.
So I'm Molly Brown. I am the president of the Deadwood Beat Economic Development Corporation. And I'm also a Deadwood resident and I'm historic press commission. So I do a lot within the community. Um, this project is also close to me because I'm in renewable energy field as well. So I'm used to going through the process for these grants. Um, understand what Anthony's getting at. It is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to be able to do some upgrades and really. Benefit a community that's kind of falling outside of both areas, but provides economic value both to Beadwood and to Sturgis. Um, so I think it's really important that we protect our, our water and we're happy to help, especially being, you know, the public forum, going out there, doing. The meet and greets, the lunch learns, really talking to residents about why this is important to, to protect our aquifers. So. That's why we're here and we stand behind the project.
Thank you.
No question. What's the current boundaries of the district?
The current boundaries of the district are the master plan of Apple Springs.
Apple Springs.
Yes. So the property boundaries.
So I, you know, the project sounds great at any time to get twenty million dollars to do a project. But so far. I see it really benefiting Apple Springs, but I don't see anybody here from the district. And the district seems to be a major component in this. Why isn't anybody here from the district?
No, Dan Carlson was here in the last meeting. He's from the district.
But now?
Boy, I, I think we have Mike here now.
So they're, they are bought in totally?
Yes.
But it's still within, the district is only within the Apple Springs boundary.
No, uh, uh, let me, let me, let me address that. So, um, as, as I mentioned earlier, so, um. I, I mean, the district i- is, is definitely all in. We've had multiple meetings with Anthony. Um, they are, like I said, we have a LOU that, that we've been floating back and forth where H two O Clear Solutions would continue to operate. So again, minimizing their risk, but, but then to give them the ability, uh, and, and funds to own this and manage it. And they are all in on expanding. We, we, we spent very little time on Apple Springs and more on. You know, kind of the Bruce's questions of, of the neighboring communities behind us, Boulder Park. Um, so they've been very, uh, involved and asking the community as well, um, gauging su- support and getting that back to Anthony.
Okay.
Bruce?
But.
I. And I think it was more of them asking, do you need us to be there? Yes or no? Versus them not being, uh, being excluded. I think it was more of a.
But Apple Springs.
They'd fill up the room if you wanted them to.
And then I'm planning a zoning for a while and we listened to a lot of promises from the original developer and, and everybody on the, on the sewer district. Sewer system for Apple Springs. And that has to go in in order for the project to go, period. Whether we do this grant or not, right?
Right.
Okay. The benefit to me as a county commissioner would be the rest of the residents around that area being part of this. But they don't know anything about it. I mean, but we don't even know if they'll get involved with it, or maybe they won't get invited by the district. We don't know. There's no guarantee, is there?
They will be invited if they're, like I said, under one acre, right? So they'll be invited. And that'll be part of this. That's baked into this, uh, this award, this grant. So, um, I mean, I don't know how you would want. I mean, unless this was years and years in the making, right? That you would have had the, the proper public engagement so that the people are informed, there wouldn't be really any way to do that. To, like, considering the grant came out in Thanksgiving of last year, it's, and then you have Christmas and now we're in Jan- January and, you know, first of February, it's a bit tough.
In my mind, there were times that they could have been involved, some communication.
Oh, in the past?
No, the last since Thanksgiving. I mean, there's been three months for that, it's happened. So, I, Brenda, what, what, what's this add to your workload?
As, as far as the time process?
Time process, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's just, you know, like having another public safety and services in there, unless you do. Jennifer said she would help with the ledgers and, and, uh, you know, the draws. But you're also required to do all the federal, follow all the federal laws as well. So that, I mean, that puts that on me and like, you know. Anthony said, if you source that out to somebody, you know.
But we gotta pay for it.
But yeah.
Yeah. Well, then the grant.
The grant.
Audit.
Yeah.
This could double what we're paying out of the taxpayer's pocket.
Yes, the audit.
Towards this.
We also would be audited as far as, because we, we meet the, already meet the requirement for the federal audit. So we're seven hundred and fifty thousand, which we already, already get that. So, but we would, it would, it would take that auditor's time. Cause he would have to audit this grant.
Okay.
So it would add to our, to our audit cost.
It is, and then when you were speaking of the accounts receivable and payable, you say the county would handle the accounts receivable and payable for the first four years? Including?
No, not necessarily. What I said was that that could, that could be, uh, contracted out for this grant.
Okay. And the grant would pay part of that, pay that?
Yeah, all expenses will be paid for by the grant or by the, the sanitary district that's already been. And, and what I, I'd like to add is, like Brenda said, you're already going, gonna have to go through annual federal audits because of the public service bill. Cause it's over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Public Safety and Services Center is not a federal grant.
So you don't need to go through?
It's because of our national force funds and, and other grants.
Okay, so you, you do go through that for that reason. Um, so maybe there's a potentiality where a CPA firm that's being engaged to help audit, go through the audits in the next three years of this grant. Could also be used for your other needs to potentially reduce your costs that you already are up against, maybe.
Yeah, and I, I don't know the definite answer, but we are required by law to have a biannual audit through the Department of Legislative Audit. And they are the ones who conduct my federal grant, our federal grant audit. So he, that, our auditor would. Do that, perform that, that audit of those grants.
Sorry. Identified, uh, at least one agreement that would need to be in place. I think Mike referenced that and that would be a letter of intent or understanding between. I think Mike, uh, who I understand currently owns the ground and the, and the infrastructure of the sanitary district and the sanitary district collects taxes and advantages. I think, someone can correct me if I'm wrong on that. So we would need, I think, to see the transfer to the sanitary district. So that is not in place yet. I think it's, you know, it's been, as Mike indicated, it's been talked about for quite a while. That's evidence of one agreement that would need to be in place going forward. Uh, there are probably others that we're trying to identify and think about what these would be, who've never done it before. Another one potentially is to make sure that the sanitary district, if they get this equipment to this property, then would assume responsibility. For the ongoing maintenance and, and, and operation and collection of, of the new facility, right? I think. So we'll, we'll, we'll work these things out. And so in that context, I asked the question, so could the county commission be the applicant presently? And, and then we work these things out and for some reason we can't work them out and you get the grant. We say, well, thank you, but no, thank you. And, and like, it doesn't sound like that's probably, maybe technically it's doable, but it's probably not feasible or reasonable. To do. So, um, so is that fair?
No, I, so if you put conditions that need to be met within a certain period of time, right? In order to maintain your position as the applicant, that's fine. Uh, the EPA does the same thing and they have the timeframe. They would like a hundred and twenty days for, for example, permits to be, but they'll work, right? And so if you follow congruently with those types of conditions as the applicant, right? Um, then you're, cause your concern is risk, your concern is, um, your ability to follow through, right? And so you don't wanna, you don't wanna jeopardize future activities of the county by, by making, I guess, a bad name for the county with this, right? So what we're trying to say is we wanna mitigate all those concerns. Obviously they have the, the interest to, to see it, to see it go through. Um, but at the same time, if an applicant is, is, um. Is seeing a benefit to the community, right? So if we put all that aside, all the, the risk concerns, and you can see a benefit to the community. Then that's, that's the only thing that needs to be, I guess, highlighted at this point, right? That it, that it's a, a useful project, that it would, you see a benefit to the community, that we've made a case that it's, uh. Advantageous if it was in place, right? If we were at the end of this and thinking about it in the back and, and the past tense. That you would say, yes, that was a good project that really helped the, the residents in the county. If, if that's, those answers are yes, then you should wanna be the applicant. Um, those concerns are conditions you need to place to maintain that.
I guess in the simplicity of things, where I'm coming from is, I don't wanna see Brenda or her office. Get overwhelmed and stressed with this task. And I don't want the tax, the rest of the taxpayers, you know, they need to have to. Basically fund this, you know, uh, for a small piece of our community. I don't wanna do this just for one developer. Now, that, that's the, I wanna somehow guarantee that it's gonna go out and be used by an also choice. It's pretty simple choice, if it's free, but, uh, by the rest of the community. I mean, we, we gotta do this for the whole county or that whole region. Not just for Apple Springs is my concern.
And I, and I think that's a legitimate, a condition that you would place. Um, if you pass a property that's forty acres. As we're, as we're extending that collection system, that person has the opportunity to account, right? And develop this property. So that's another developer. That probably wasn't thinking about being a developer until they knew you had access to sanitary system.
Or Boulder Park or.
Or Boulder Park, exactly.
A lot of houses there if you're gone.
Right, there's existing and future.
And, and, uh, I think there are a few other, I'm not sure, other requirement, federal requirements that we would have to sort of check out as well, right? So right, right, or one of those is, and I'm gonna mistake, I think Jennifer can jump in on me, but it's the ability. Part of a federal grant you have to have, it's probably pretty simple. Uh, uh, allow for folks who, English isn't their first language. To be able to, to, if they come to get county services, that there's some way to facilitate them, understanding. So that's just one example. I probably horribly have bodge that, but you get the idea. So that's just one example. I probably horribly have bodge that, but you get the idea. That's one thing that we don't have in place. We don't have any federal grants right now that, that we would have to look into, right? That's just an example. And, and, and I would defer to Brenda. Brenda, we're, we're talking about ARPA funds. Was there some declination of use of ARPA funds or something because of the federal requirements? Am I saying that right? The county decided not to.
Well, yes, but so we, we received ARPA funds in the amount of five million dollars. And so there are stricter requirements when they first came out on how you could use those funds. Through the process, the regulations loosened up a bit, so they allowed you to use up to ten million dollars for county services. So that is the option that the county took, is to use those for county funds, salaries, you know. Because originally it was like, well, we could use those for the Public Safety Services Center. Well, then once you use those funds, now, now Davis Bacon applies, I mean, all of those federal rules from the two CF, correct me, RF two hundred, apply to that project. So everything that is going on up there had to follow the federal grant or the federal laws. And so that the county chose to make the motion to use for county services. And so.
And I, and I've seen the opposite. I've seen East Chinatown, Michigan, they used their eight thousand population town. They had, it was based on population amount of ARPA money you got. They opted to use that money towards their EPW program. Right? So, you know, it's, it really just depended on that at the time. But what happened was, like you said, we saw that as well. Nobody knew, there's all these webinars, how it can be used, what is, and then all of a sudden it was drop it in your general fund and use it. Yeah, so, so that's a, a once in a blue moon, I probably century situation after a pandemic.
Jennifer, did you have anything?
No, go ahead.
Jennifer, did you have anything to add as far as the federal requirements? Have I touched on everything?
I, I wonder if maybe the point you were making about the not using on your jail was lost. The reason you chose to use it for services was to maybe escape or avoid having to, you, having to comply with all of those federal rules, which, for cities that maybe get federal funds all the time, maybe the examples that Anthony has used, they're probably already set up. They already have things like subaward policies and procurement policy and a limited English proficiency plan or language access plan. But I don't know that, I, I don't know if you guys have ever done those things. So if, if you haven't, you would need to do those.
Those who know those communities had not had those opportunities.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
Why you think, but I think the reason why we're here today is, is it's very soon, and Anthony can tell us exactly when, but very soon, these grants are starting to be awarded and they're awarded on a rolling basis. And, and so that's, that's why, and I think it might, I think that you got to say, they, they're interested in maybe not knowing today, but very soon, if you're interested or not, or if they need to sort of move on and develop.
Yeah, I mean, Mike can answer that, but we definitely are cognizant of the deadline. The fact that we need to get an applicant in place, that it's not, I, I don't know how it would have been done differently. I have one other one that I'm personally involved in, that's an EPA grant and the county is the applicant. But the operate, it's a landfill and it's operated by the county, right? So, so I guess that's a different dynamic than this, because this is not something that you'll have anything to do with in the future. But in the end, it still goes through that same kind of unsolicited and kind of unorthodox approach, which we find ourselves in. Normally, it would be you coming to KLJ and saying, hey, we have this need. Can you get us grant money? And then we'll go get the grant. I don't see how in this grant program that would happen. Because these needs are all kind of off on their own, recruiting somebody to be the applicant. It just seems like.
Yeah.
So that's why they keep repeating, this is a new grant, this is a new. And it's not.
I'd like to clarify something.
Mike?
Yeah, sorry, too many technology things going off. I wanna clarify something. The comment was made benefiting the developer, you know, as I've stated before, it, it's a separate entity. I mean, I don't, I guess I'm not sure, so Apple Springs currently has ten million dollars of infrastructure. So, th- this isn't about Apple Springs at all. And I, I think the reason we're here today is because the sanitary district, it's already in motion for them to acquire the assets. It, it, it gives an opportunity for them to, to serve a broader community. And, and so I, I, I'm not, I just want you guys to know, I mean, Apple Springs already has the infrastructure. We already have a, a working plan. This is really about all the other neighboring communities. And again, it's, it's a separate entity and the district, part of the reason I'm here today is because our, the agreement with KLJ requires having an applicant for them to finish the rest of the due diligence, which includes, you know, gaining support or feedback from the community and, and interest to, to fit into the broader plan, so.
Hello, I don't know. This, from the first day you kind of presented this to us, it's, it sounded pretty simple back then. But now it sounds quite complicated. And my own personal thoughts, sitting here, I think that the sanitary district should be the one making this application, not Lawrence County. That's my personal feelings on this. Rest of you wanna weigh in on what you're thinking?
Eric? Yeah, I just, you know, I always look at risk versus the reward. And so the, the risk, see, either it's Lawrence County, it's the risk, because they're the ones that are, that are gonna be responsible for administering the grant, doing the paperwork and the audits that, that falls into that. The reward comes from, I think probably somewhat that brings the sanitary district and also the outlying residents that could add audits. But we don't really know if they're going to be interested in. We don't know what the cost is going to be to them. There's a lot of unanswered questions there. So I'm, I'm struggling with coming up with, with the reward that would equal the risk to the county. That's kind of where I'm at on the deal right now.
What, what, what risk has not been identified? I mean, I, I guess, you know, Anthony and KLJ, KLJ have done a comprehensive.
The risk is, you know, the, the staffing that's going to be required with the record keeping. Getting through the audit, the additional expenses that, that we could, be imposed upon us through the state audit. You know, those are the, the risks. By making sure that, that the grant is, is administered properly, that's gonna fall upon the county. They're the ones that are ultimately responsible for that.
Brandon, did you have a comment or question?
All right, I'm just, I'm hearing a lot of stuff that, that I agree with. I mean, I think Rick makes good points. I think Eric's making good points. And I, I don't know. I think, I guess I understand kind of what they're doing or what, what the thought process is. There's, there's an opportunity for a twenty million dollar grant that otherwise probably won't, won't occur. And we seem to be the obvious choice to administer that. We've not, we've not done this kind of thing before. So unfortunately, I think there might be some gun shyness or some, a lot of unknown factors that I don't know that we wanna quite pursue into at this time. I don't know, my opinion. I think it's a good idea. I'd like, I'd like to just go ahead and say, yeah, let's do it, but there are an awful lot of, there's some unknowns and some uncomfortable areas in there that I'm just not, I'm not sure of yet.
Okay. Amber?
Can I ask a question? I just, I don't know if this is too simplistic or not, but, so if, if the county says, okay, we'll, we'll be the applicant, we're gonna start the process, you know, we're gonna start turning stuff in. I don't understand how, if there's something that you're not comfortable with, you back away from it later. I, I'm just still kind of struggling with that.
That was a question I kind of asked.
Because if you're, if you, you know, you have to start the process because you're not gonna know some of the answers till you get into the process of the grant, is kind of how I understand it. So if you get through and, yeah, it might suck that you have to back out of the grant, but if at any time the county is uncomfortable with how something is going, I think they could back out. Or am I missing something? I don't know.
I think we, I asked that question, I think, the other day, and my understanding was, is that if the grant is awarded, the EPA would have a very firm understanding or thought process that you would start, start work within a hundred and twenty days.
Or you would lose the grant. So if you're uncomfortable, you would lose the grant.
So I asked it in the context of, is there any reason why we couldn't? And my understanding was, is that, no, once you make the application, you're in it to win it. That's how, what I took away. So that, if I would misunderstood that, then.
Well, I think the reason for that is because it would be unfair to the people who, who could benefit from, if another applicant was more willing, right? And like to Eric's point, if it's, if it's hard to see the reward for the risk, then it doesn't make sense for you to do it, right? As they had to be the applicant. If, if you can't see the twenty million dollars of infrastructure that's put into that area, and that, that might increase property taxes, that might increase revenue to the town, or to the, to the county. That could offset any potential risk that you're looking at, then, then we need to go where there'd be somebody that can.
So, so do you have another applicant? I think that needs to be shared then.
Sturgis because of the value, because their impact economically is also there. Their FEMA grant was over seven hundred, well over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So they've already gone through these, these federal audits and stuff.
Sounds like there were. They're, they would be capable of doing it.
Capable.
They're all used to it.
Yeah, capability wise, yeah, experience. Well, they're bigger, right? And they're, they get hit by this huge thing, right? So they've had to learn how to, as a small town, manage all kinds of things, infrastructure, utilities, fire, police, et cetera, right? But they're, from jurisdiction standpoint, they're, they're being approached from a community in another county. You know, that's just in close proximity. I guess the only thing you could link them to is the address, the mailing.
Are we shared services with them?
Yeah.
A gravity, so it's not like it's out of the problem.
How would that, you're still gonna end up administering stuff because it's in our county, it's on our tax basis. It's not, you can't take that away because it's still in our account.
Why, they could volunteer the tenants.
But if, if, if the grant, if the grant allows funding, so in the case that was brought up, you know, staffing, recording, et cetera. I mean, if the, if the grant allows funding for that, isn't it just a, a matter of, of better, to Amber's point, better understanding as we go along and for that to be built into the plan? And so you're, you, you might not extend as much infrastructure because you need funds to, to do the auditing. And, and so that's not, you know, that's not rested on, on Brenda's office. And for staffing and that, I mean, am I wrong, Anthony? I mean, the, the, it, it allows for that funding, right? We just have to plan for it.
Yes, it's, well, and you're, and you're backstopping, right? If there's things that the grant find ineligible, then that falls on the responsibility of the sanitary district and, and the developer. And, and they had already, I'm not bringing up Sturgis, well, because. It's a discussion that postdates, that predates me. They were already having that discussion with Sturgis when I came, when I was hired, right? And so the only thing I know is I know, I know, we do work for them as well. And so, and it's a pretty common practice that when you start getting involved and, and another entity's assets and all that stuff, you annex. I mean, Rapid City does it, Fox Elder does it, everybody does it. Once they get entangled, then they go through that. But.
I think from a district standpoint, having met with them multiple times, I mean, I, I mean, Sturgis certainly is an option. I think it's wildly, widely known that they were trying to annex Apple Springs for a while before some change in management, different things. But, you know, I, I think from a, from a district standpoint, they would prefer, you know, to work directly with Lawrence County. I mean, but, I, I mean, again, I go back to my point. I mean, if the, if, if the grant allows us to fund the gaps that you guys are concerned about, it, it seems to me that it, you know, it's gonna rely more on, on KLJ and that and, and, you know, identifying those gaps. But if the funding's there, I, I'm, I'm still puzzling with the risk.
Anthony is, is the, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is there a request today for the commission to authorize the chairman to sign a grant application? Or what exactly would be the ask today?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a, it's either no, maybe, or yes, right? Those are the three answers. So, so I guess one of those three would probably be, would be great, right? Is that fair?
Covers it all.
Maybe kind of sucks.
I, I think if it's maybe, I, we would like a timeframe and the criteria that it would be a yes. In some reasonable amount of time.
Let's ask this board, our next meeting is the thirteenth of February. Would you gentlemen like to think on this a little bit more or?
I would. I'm a maybe. I'm not a no.
Okay.
I'm a maybe.
Yeah, I don't wanna spoil an opportunity here.
But I would.
But I don't wanna stress our auditor and her office. I don't wanna spend tax dollars on audits and. I would like straightforward layout answers from Brenda and Bruce on your thoughts on this. And because it's gonna land in your laps of what your thoughts are, what it's gonna take yet, what, what things, having heard this today, what things you can move on financially, onto another accounting firm. How much can we push off on somebody else to have the grant pay? And can we relieve you of all those concerns? Because you guys are my concerns. And if, you know, just have time to think about that and tell us just down, down and dirty, you wanna do it or not? And, and that would get me off the maybe, if you're comfortable with it. And I don't wanna hear it right now. I mean, by next meeting. Brandon, are you on board with going to the next meeting with?
Yeah, I, I think if it came up today, I'd probably have to vote against it, but I'm not a no. I just, there's a lot of questions I've got in my mind. I kinda echo Rick in that sentiment.
And I think with everybody's help, Mr. Chairman, we've tried to identify some of the obvious questions that Anthony has prepared that information and try to address those. If you have any more specific questions above and beyond what's been discussed today or some follow up, let me know and we'll do our best. I appreciate, again, everybody's time. That's spent quite a bit of time getting to here today.
And I think it's also important to maybe hear from others that maybe have gone through this, other communities, not, not engineers or firms or what have you. And so I can point you to two people. One is the mayor of Naples, New York, Brian Shank, who's done this before, exactly what we've done. And the other is Artie Bryson, who's the township supervisor for Clay Township. They put in a treatment plant exactly like we're proposing now, on an island that had nothing, all septic fields, all wetlands, and the Saint Clair flats where Saint Clair River dumps into Lake Saint Clair. So Artie and, and Brian, I can give you their contact emails, telephone numbers, everything. And you guys, they'd be happy to. Share their experience.
Comfortable with going to the next meeting.
Yeah. If you invite him to Deadwood, he'd come to, both of them. Be the thirteenth, about noon, nine thirty-ish roughly.
Sorry, guys, they just. You got information to say that, I mean, we're representing the whole county, not this, over canyon, so. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
With that.
Thank you. Items from the public is the next thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad you all are still here. I heard all this and I've been, I've been to all these meetings, listening to this, and I'm afraid there's a lot of disconnects. As, as Commissioner Tisdale pointed out, there's, there's still a lot of unknowns, a lot of questions. But what bothers me is that we have these statements saying that Apple Springs, i.e. the sanitary district of Apple Springs, we're all in. But the benefit, the, the gain, as you, as you put it, Commissioner, was, was for the people outside. But the benefit, the, uh, the gain, as you, as you put it, Commissioner, was, uh, was from the people outside of Apple Springs Sanitary District. Yet we haven't heard from a single one of these yet. And so we don't know, and they don't know. I mean, imagine someday, hi, I'm from the government, actually, I'm a government contractor, I'm here to solve all your water and sanitary problems. It's free. It's not the way to approach this problem or this challenge, and I'm glad that you all have deferred this until your next regular meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the body of the audience want any comments or? I'm not seeing anyone, I'm gonna.
I actually have a comment. Sorry, I'm going through this process with a lot of communities, especially smaller communities that have very, very small staffs, um, on projects. Um, I think it is scary, because a lot of it is unknown. There's a lot of unknowns even for the government agencies that are managing grant funds, and it's super short. Application and time windows. What's a little bit different about, I think, this go around of funding that's coming out is that working with the federal agencies has been a lot easier than with grants in the past. They're more willing to work with communities and try and figure this out, you know, with with the projects as they go. But, um, Anthony, as well, is we try and build all of the costs into the actual grant funding and application that you're asking for, so that the burden doesn't go back onto the community. And that's really one thing, as, you know, from outside perspective, we're looking at this project, so we're trying to to not put anything on your plate and to take it all off and to basically make a great project that we benefit.
Brandon, you had your hand up, sir.
Yeah, for the benefit of, for us folks at home, we'd like to get some names and addresses of who are speaking, please.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, you're supposed to say your name where you're at. You already, you've already mailed too many letter bombs to my house. Hi, Ron Muller, one one two two one, Sheetle Belt Road, Lee.
All right, guys, we're, we're gonna close this out here. Is there anyone on on, uh, online that wants to speak, uh, as an item? Like not, we've been talking about, but anything different, further? I'm not seeing anything. I'm gonna close that portion, and it's up to the commissioners, any items? We are there. Tony is wanting to use the room.
Thank you, everybody.